Okay, we are all in. So, welcome back. We're returning from executive session. It is 6:37 PM. And I just need a motion to open up the public session, please.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Krista. And a second?
This is Glenn. I'll make the second.
Okay, thank you. And we are in public session. Okay, so we waive the pledge for the web-based meetings. And we begin with our administrator remarks. Actually, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Carrie, Susan's not here tonight. She's managing votes and ballots. So Carrie, you're my Susan for the evening. And I didn't take a vote on opening the public session. So, Krista Burdett, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Okay, Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Gretzner?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes? Okay, we are 6:00 this evening. Danny is not attending the meeting this evening. He's celebrating with his family this evening. So, we are, motion passes 6:00. We are now open. Thank you. Sorry, okay. So now we begin with administrative remarks. And Dr. Gosh, would you like to start us off?
Yes, please. Thank you. Good evening. I have several comments tonight. First has to do with a question about BOSI's that a community member raised at our last board meeting, specifically around what accountability exists. So, I spoke with the high school staff to get some more details. So in regards to the Career and Tech Program at BOSI's, there are academic requirements that students must meet in their 10th grade year in order to be eligible, both in regards to credit accrued and quarterly averages as well as attendance. Once in the program during 11th and 12th grade, students also have academic requirements in addition to maintaining regular attendance at BOSI's. This monitoring is done at least quarterly through our MTSS process. And in the past, despite all our efforts, students have been dropped from the program if they do not meet these benchmarks. Onto Bear's Bonanza. So June is here, and so is our Bear's Bonanza of daily themes to celebrate our learning community. Our first major event was our staff parade. And on behalf of the parade planning committee, we'd like to thank all students, families, and community members who came out to show their Brewster pride. I'd also like to thank Mrs. Mary Smith, our Director of Transportation, as well as our School Resource Officers and the Putnam County Sheriff's Department who assisted with its planning and implementation. It was really a great community event, and it meant a lot to all the staff that participated. We had over 200 staff members who participated in some way. We'd like to thank all the students and families who have submitted photos and videos of other Bear's Bonanza activities. Coming up tomorrow is Sing and Dance Like a Bear Day. So we're happy to have any board member submissions that would like to be posted on social media. Also this week is our virtual Field Day for grades K through 8, which we're really excited about. So just again, a thank you to the dozens of committee members who came together and created events and activities in the spirit of being together while we are apart. We also have our CV-Star STEAM Expo. So if you remember last year, CV-Star revamped its science fair and made it more of a STEAM approach. And they would not be stopped this year with not being able to be in person. So they're taking it virtual. On Wednesday, June 17th, their STEAM Expo site will go live and open to the public. There are over 70 students from grades 3 through 5 that are participating in three different categories. So there's the art show, which showcases classroom art, which are in-progress art portfolios from creative arts students. There are art projects from the more than 30 DDL art classes that have been meeting this spring since we've been out in March. There are thousands of art pieces to see from class and home. So this year, there's a new art challenge where students work to solve a problem in one of three different categories: wearable, painting, and illustration. So our students created many impressive pieces. Then we have the STEAM innovations as well. So this really truly highlights how our students have become our teachers. Students in grades 3 through 5 pose a problem, and then work to create a solution. They've submitted videos, pictures, and demonstrations of how their creations can make a difference. So this is an interesting, inspiring, incredible experience, and we invite everyone to check it out online on Wednesday, June 17th. Two additional comments. One is on, the first is on our reentry subcommittees. So Dr. Banlow has spoken at previous board meetings about our approach to planning for our September reentry. So there are nine subcommittees. These subcommittees include Health and Safety, Teaching and Learning, Bilingual Education, Special Education, Digital Equity, Staffing and Human Resources, and Social Emotional Learning, Transportation, and Budget/Fiscal. So each of these subcommittees will be responsible for taking a deep dive into these categories to ensure that our practices and procedures align to state ed guidelines. Those guidelines are expected to come out later this month. And we are responsible as a district for submitting a plan that encompasses all of our processes and procedures to state ed by the end of July. So if you're interested in being a part of this effort, please contact me, and we can figure out which committee would be best to serve on. And finally, huge congratulations to our top 10 and our SEAL of Bilingual Recipients. We acknowledge your hard work, and we're very proud of all that you have accomplished. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Harrington?
Okay, good evening. This evening, the board will note the recommendation of several new instructional staff to JFK and CV-Star to replace the vacancies in each of these buildings as a result of retirements. Additionally, this evening, I will be making a formal recommendation to appoint Ms. Janine Harris as the HR Department's new Personnel Specialist, responsible for the support and assistance of all matters related to classified or civil service employees. I'll share a more thorough introduction, including Ms. Harris's professional background prior to the consent agenda being introduced to the board later in the evening. I would however like to again recognize and thank Ms. Maria Brea, who retired from the district last year and held this position for many years. Her willingness to return on a per diem basis has ensured the continuity of personnel matters this past month and has been a godsend for our department. Ms. Brea is a true professional and an absolute delight to work with. And she has been with us, she will be with us through June as we begin to support Ms. Harris's transition to the district. Finally, a note of thanks to those SEIU employees, specifically our clerical aides, library aides, and computer operations aides that have helped to supervise and monitor the ballot box over the course of the last four days. Ms. Anne Marie Chalmers, the SEIU Vice President, was particularly helpful in securing staff over the weekend. And on behalf of the district, I'd like to just acknowledge my appreciation for her leadership. Individuals from the SEIU will continue to support the budget vote by working under the direction of Ms. Susan Gavin, our District Clerk, next week as the votes are secured and tabulated. And with that, I'll pass the baton to my colleague, Mr. Victor Carlson.
Good evening. Two quick updates. So this morning, the Finance Committee met to review the upcoming bond issuance required in July to permanently finance the district-wide capital improvement project that was approved by the voters in December of 2014 and completed in September of 2018. Alex Kerr, Assistant Vice President of Capital Markets Advisors, our fiscal advisors, shared that the interest rate environment has improved greatly over the past year. And based on rate comparison from current to a year ago, it's anticipated that the district will avoid about $2.5 million in interest expense, as opposed to the district issuing a bond a year ago. So one silver lining in the uncertainty within the economy is that interest rates are extraordinarily low. And the district is well positioned to issue a bond in July and take full advantage of those low interest rates. So a $2.5 million savings over the next 13 years is an incredible amount of money. So we're in a very good position as we enter the next month when we'll issue that bond. And of course, just a reminder, the Governor issued Executive Order 202.39, which extends the budget vote timeline. It allows residents to mail their ballots between now and June 16th at 5:00. So please, if you know anyone who hasn't yet submitted their ballot, please encourage them to get it in the mail. In accordance with that executive order, the district is prohibited from accepting hand-delivered ballots. They must come through US Mail. Again, that's all in accordance with the Governor's executive order. So if you again know of anyone who has not yet submitted their ballots, please encourage them to do so by US Mail. Please instruct them that drop-off is not a permitted form of submitting their ballot, again, only through US Mail. And that concludes my comments for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Banlow?
Good evening, members of the board. Just want to update you. I'm sure you've read in the numerous emails you received from NISBA that the Governor had, over the last weekend, issued several executive orders. And Mr. Carlson already outlined one of them. So we are in the process of unpacking all those executive orders as we get information from the State Education Department and the Board Attorneys. We'll be releasing information to the board. We'll be sending email updates, our Friday update, and also communications to the community with any of the new executive orders and what the impact would be on Brewster. The second thing I want to mention tonight is I just want to thank Dr. Gosh and Mary Smith and the entire School Spirit Car Parade that was held last week for the students. It was a great success, and I really believe the kids really enjoyed us getting out there just as much as all of us enjoyed getting in the cars and going out and seeing all the kids. So a big thank you for that. That was a much-needed boost of love to send out to the kids. Also, I want to just thank, once again, Mr. Carlson, his department, Susan Gavin, Glenn Friar, anyone involved. I think Dr. Harrington mentioned as well with the ballot and voting. It was a tremendous effort. I just want to, it's continuing. Susan is there now, working. But I just want to really thank all of you for the efforts, and I just want to share with the board the great work that everyone is doing. Tonight, I just want to keep my comments brief. I just, we're very proud. Mrs. Whorler is going to be announcing our top 10, as Dr. Gosh has already said. And we have Alicia Manguso, who will be talking to us about our SEAL of Bilingual graduates. So we're very excited about that. So thank you. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. And for myself, this evening, I just wanted to just give a brief recap on the Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association monthly meeting that we had, which was also our annual meeting, this particular one. And just, it's really great that, you know, I know, Dr. Banlow, you have meetings with superintendents. I know Victor does the same with business officials, and I know Susan does. Like, everyone's doing their part to kind of stay connected with all the different districts and what others are going through. And so this is just another avenue for board presidents to come together and share what's going on in the district and to see, you know, how, you know, we are all struggling through the same, you know, similar situations. The four topics that were discussed, kind of in particular, were just, you know, the upcoming, which is now, things have changed since that talk, but it was the school election and budget vote, and how everyone was handling that, and also how everyone was handling their year-end ceremonies, as well as reopening in the fall. So basically, the same conversation that everyone else is having. And one of the other things that was brought up was just advocacy, which is another thing that we always do. And they were discussing a proposed, I'm forgetting what it's called right now, but basically, federal funding that would, more federal funding that would go toward private schools and then therefore public schools. And the name is escaping me right now, but just that there'd be some advocacy around that, and we could, you know, just as a district, put forth our opinion on, you know, where tax dollars should go. So more on that next time around. And then the last thing is, to the board, I will be sending an email out this week just about our superintendent evaluation. Needs to get done in June. And so I'll just send an email out to everyone so we can do the review that we need to do and set up a time, you know, an executive session time to review that with Dr. Banlow. So, and I think that's it for me. So we now move on to our student representative. I think Aaron, I saw him on there earlier.
Hi, thank you.
Okay, welcome.
Hi. All I have to say tonight is we're finalizing details for the cooperating graduation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so then we can move on to presentations, recognition, discussion. And first up is our Brewster High School Top 10 Classes 2020. Ms. Whorler, welcome.
Thank you. So every year, we have a very impressive top 10. This year is equally impressive. But what's most impressive about this group is their commitment not only to academics, but to kindness, civic responsibility, and the extraordinary musical and athletic ability of every single one of these students. They've just been involved in everything from freshman year on. So it's really just an amazing group. So this year, number 10 is Eliza Patty. Her grade point average is a 100.359. She will be attending SUNY New Poles in the fall, hopefully, if it's open. And she's going to be focusing on biology and plant pathology. A lot of our top 10, as you'll see, their favorite teachers tend to be Mrs. Amuso, Mr. Maggiato, and Mr. Mullane. They all have some wonderful things to say about the teachers. But for Eliza, her favorite memory, we asked all of the top 10 what their favorite memory was, and it was a band trip to Washington DC and a boat ride on the Potomac. Nine is Samantha Kim. Samantha Kim has a grade point average of 100.506. She'll be attending University of Washington, Seattle, as she is there now. She will be majoring in engineering. As I said earlier, her favorite faculty member is Mrs. Amuso, and she wishes her a happy retirement this year. And her best memory is the varsity tennis team and the bus rides and the fundraisers that everybody participated in. Number eight is Robert Frankenberry, 100.730. He'll be attending Northeastern University and majoring in Economics and Environmental Studies. His faculty members, for those of you who don't know, RJ has been one of the leads in all of our musicals for the last four years. And the last two years, our directors are Alex and Nikki Siriani for the drama and for the musical. And those are his favorite faculty members this year. His fondest memory, of course, was Spirit Week, winning the hallway and banner contest for the class. That's something new. Normally, it's the juniors who win, but this year, it was the seniors, and it was a wonderful experience for all. Seven is Supriya Sharma with 100.821. She will be attending University of California, Berkeley. Her career aspirations are Global Studies and Economics. And you'll see why her favorite, one of her favorite teachers is Mr. Mullane. And he was also her advisor through Model UN. Her most memorable experience is the conferences that she's attended with Model UN, a lot of schools throughout the nation, and debating on numerous topics. And she's won multiple awards for her participation in Model UN. Six is our very own student representative, Erin Lauren, with a grade point average of 101.259. He will be attending University of Texas at Austin, and his major will be Communication Studies and Political Science. Hopefully, he'll be working on some political campaigns in the future. So his favorite staff member, of course, is Mrs. Amuso. It is her teaching style, and it's without her, she makes, she truly makes students better readers, writers, and people in general. His favorite memory, and I'm sure he has so many favorite memories, is the Dave Community in 2018. He has been a co-president of Demo Congress this year. He's had the honor of organizing Demo Congress. He had a brilliant team. They've been volunteering all over the place. And he is just, really, I don't know what we're going to do without him next year. So amazing individual. Daniel Buena Dona, 101.404. He will be attending University of Florida, and he is majoring in business. His favorite staff member is Coach Castaldo. He was fortunate enough to have him as a gym teacher all throughout high school. You could always count on Coach to brighten up anybody's day, and that's a fact. His most memorable experience was winning Mr. Brewster. This year, in early March, they raised over $80,000 to help cystic fibrosis, and Daniel was instrumental in that. Catherine Howell, 101.753. She'll be attending Rochester Institute of Technology. She's majoring in biomedical engineering. It's definitely a difficult decision to pick a favorite staff member, but in this case, she's gone with Commander Wadelek, who is just a remarkable individual. And he runs the Naval Junior ROTC Program, which Catherine has been a part of all four years of high school. And for her, her memories are cemented in ROTC, an annual inspection, and military ball, which unfortunately, this year, we did not get to have. Number three is Camden DeCarlo with 101.954. He will be attending Colgate University and majoring in biochemistry. His future career is undecided. His most memorable experience here at Brewster has to be a participant in Math League, which is the advisor is Larry Maggiato. Meeting and participating, of course, over the last two years, going to different competitions has been an experience that he'll never forget. Number two is Megan Feehan with 102.552. She will be attending Boston College and majoring in nursing. And Mr. Mag is one of her favorite teachers. She had him both freshman and sophomore year. He, of course, runs the math team that she has been a part of all throughout high school. One of her fondest memories is going to States with the lacrosse team in 2008, and the amazing send-off that the students and faculty gave to the lacrosse team. And our valedictorian this year is none other than Andrew DiFabio, with a grade point average of 103.332. He will be attending Cornell University. He is majoring in physics and mathematics. Mr. Maggiato and Mr. Mullane are both favorite teachers of his, and they are willing to think outside of the realm of a course. His most memorable experience has been being part of the marching band, the parades, and the football games, of course, with marching band. So congratulations. What Andrew also didn't mention is Andrew is a National Merit Scholar on top of everything else. So, an amazing group of students. So congratulations to all.
So much for that presentation. I just, I look at those GPAs, and I don't even know how.
Incredible.
So thank you so much. Okay, so we will now move on to our next presentation, SEAL of Bilingual Recognition, Ms. Whorler, again, with Ms. Manguso. And Dr. Banlow, did you want to introduce them?
Yes, I just want to thank Mrs. Whorler and congratulate all of our top 10 first. And then we're going to now move into New York State SEAL of Bilingual, headed up by Mrs. Whorler, our VHS principal, and also Mrs. Alicia Manguso. She is a part-time K-12 ENL specialist at Wells. She's also an ENL teacher. So she has several roles. So Alicia and Nikki.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. I just wanted to give you a quick overview of the process and what the students earned. So the New York State SEAL of Bilingual is a special honor that is earned to students who persevere through a year-long process to prove their bilinguacy. Students are assigned an advisor, but they mainly work independently in creating a project that will demonstrate their bilinguacy in English and in a world language. Criteria is set by the state, and students earn, must earn points based on various assessments, as well as a rubric for a project presentation. This year, we had 13 students earn the SEAL of Bilingual. Eight were in English and Spanish, four were in English and Italian, and one was in English and Russian. This group of students exhibited an extreme amount of perseverance during this unprecedented time. I want to compliment all of the students who persevered, but also presented. During these presentations, I saw things like flexibility, poise, and composure. And while the language is exciting enough, it was really exciting to see students present these adult skills that, you know, you have to have when you're in the job force. So it really was a great thing to see. I also would like to thank the SEAL of Bilingual Committee and presentation panel. It really was a team effort, and we kind of all came together to help the students see this process through. So congratulations to everyone.
So our first, our first SEAL of Bilingual recipient is Alexa Argetta, and she completed her SEAL of Bilingual in both English and Spanish. Her plans are to continue her education at University of Albany for criminal justice and the pre-law track. Most of, most of these students have family members, which really encourage them to be bilinguistic or more bilinguistic than they were originally. And for Alexa, it really is an easier way to communicate for others in the community and her family. What you'll notice is there are a few students who are also, were in our top 10, such as Camden. Camden completed the SEAL of Bilingual in English and Spanish, and he is going to Colgate to major in biochemistry. During this process, what he learned was that he's capable of sustaining, sustaining a language and learning a language that's somewhat outside of his comfort zone. He decided that it just needs a lot of work and determination. And I'm sure, being number three, he is used to a large amount of work and determination. Our valedictorian, Andrew DiFabio, completed the SEAL of Bilingual in English and Italian. He is going to Cornell University. He is majoring in physics. He discovered that his comprehension in his Italian is much better than he originally thought, and it made him more confident. He's been studying Italian for six years, and he hopes to be a better communicator. Nick Hayward completed his SEAL of Bilingual in English and Italian. He is going to Binghamton University, and currently, his major is undeclared. He, of course, realized by getting a SEAL of Bilingual and making him bilinguistic that it would enable him to pursue other careers that help him communicate with people on a more global level. Myrna Guerna Gonzalez completed her degree in English and Spanish. She's taking a gap year this year to help support her family business. What she learned is not to give up, to do everything that's possible in you, to put in effort and good, hard work, and that you'll be a success. Eduardo Manges, English and Spanish. He's going to be going to the University of, it's on, Tampa, I believe, or Arizona? I just lost it on my screen, so I apologize. He'll be going to University of Tampa, biochemistry. He's been practicing Spanish. Both his parents taught him Spanish at an early age, but he was glad that he kept up practicing Spanish. He is proud of his Latino-American heritage, and without a second language, he wouldn't be able to communicate with his family members. Isabella Nitti completed her SEAL of Bilingual in English and Spanish. She is continuing her studies at the State University of New York in Oswego for childhood education. During this time, she learned she was capable of speaking Italian for long amounts of time. She doubted herself, but through a lot of hard work, she was able to achieve getting the SEAL of Bilingual. Samantha Outhouse received her SEAL of Bilingual in English and Spanish, and her plans are to continue, her continue at the University of Pittsburgh with pre-communication in science and disorders. One of the things Samantha realized is working hard and determination is the key, and it is very important. She has many Hispanic friends in the community, and she'd love to be able to communicate with these families, and she intends on using Spanish to further her career. Sabrina Pacaruchu, English and Italian. She's planning to go to college in the near future and study pre-physical therapy. Again, she learned that hard work and perseverance was very important, particularly when she is concentrating on a language and learning the vocabulary. She had already learned somewhat Spanish, but she was encouraged to take Italian also. So she is multilingual and not just bilingual. Jacqueline Rosinos, English and Spanish. She will be going to Western Connecticut State University, and currently, she is undeclared with her major. She realizes that she could still persevere and look past the sudden changes in the community to achieve something that she's very passionate about. And she is very passionate about bilingual education and bilinguacy. That way, she could look at her culture, analyze her culture, and communicate with her family. Alexander Reichelt, who received his Seal of Bili Literacy in English and Russian. He will be going to SUNY Binghamton to pursue a degree in engineering biomedical and mechanical. What he is looking for is the honesty. He wanted to see if he was capable of starting something on a path at a very young age, and now he realizes he's able to explore even more languages as he moves on to his college career. Sophia Rigerio, she also will be going to Binghamton University with a double major with biology. During this process, she learned that speaking, a lot of times speaking out loud, she doubted herself, but she is proud that she is an accomplished speaker in Italian, and it is very important for her to visit her family in Italy. Last time she visited, she was not able because she did not speak the language, but now she will be able to. Annie Sullivan received her degree in English and Spanish. She will be going to Belmont University for commercial music and songwriting. During this process, she learned that hard work is a benefit in the long run, and the idea of speaking Spanish is really challenging, but she realized that it takes a lot of dedication to learn a new language, and that she was able to complete this. Hopefully, for her, being bilingual means she can speak to the community and the people around her as a more global community. And that is our bili literacy, our Seal of Bili Literacy recipients. To the left on the slide, you'll see the Seal of Bili Literacy Committee and then the presentation panelists, who sat through all the presentations and worked with each student's mentors.
I just want to thank Mrs. Whorler and also Mrs. Manguso, and I know some of our students and their parents are probably listening in, so congratulations from all of us. We're so proud of all of you, so round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you. All, so it's amazing, just again. It's amazing what our students do, and it's just so impressive, and I know we love as a board to hear these great things, so keep bringing it to us. Okay. So we now move on to public remarks as they relate to any action items on today's agenda. And I'm just double-checking, but I don't believe that anything that came in related to the action items. So I will hold off on those until the second round of public comment, and we will move right into our action item. And first up, we have acceptance of audit reports. A, 2019-20 internal audit focus area, human resources. B, New York State Controllers Audit, professional services.
Yeah, so the internal audit function is a process where each year, we ask our internal auditors to focus on a specific area. This year, the focus area was on human resources. We had an audit committee meeting on May 19th to review the audit report and, as well as the corrective action plan prepared by Dr. Harrington, and we are recommending its approval by the board this evening. In addition to the controllers audit, which was reviewed by the audit committee back in February, the minutes of both of these meetings are up on the district's website.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item, please.
Scott, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, and I need a second.
I'll make that.
Thank you, Krista. And questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. How do you vote, Krista Barati?
I vote yes.
Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Rutter?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes, with no objections. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Action item number two, approval of credit change order for athletic field renovation project closeout, GCF-002.
Yes, this is a change order that credits the district $20,000 and relieves the contractor of certain punch list items, such as upkeep of rain gardens and management of the field after they've been put back into use.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item, please.
I'll make the motion. It's Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie. I need a second, please.
Eric will second.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board on this item?
Besides, yeah, sorry, go ahead, Carrie.
No, go ahead, Scott.
Going to play that game, are you? Besides saving us $20,000, because we have basically a crew that can take care of this, there's the maintenance on the rain gardens. Is there any other major punch item that I didn't see? Just just regular maintenance stuff?
It's mostly punch list items as well as some field grading outside of the left-field wall on the baseball field. In terms of the grading, which, as you're aware, we also have three regulatory agencies involved in this project, DEP, DEC, and also the State Education Department. So the grading of the hill outside of the playing area needs to be regraded so that there's better drainage into the field drains that were placed into the, into the ground, again, well outside the left-field foul area.
Thank you.
And Victor, I just wanted to confirm that the work that the contractor is no longer doing, we're performing in-house. It's not a situation where we have to go find someone else to do this work?
Correct. We're doing it in-house.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Krista Barati, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Rutter?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes, with no objections. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Action item number three, acceptance of donation. A, Star Foundation for Star Scholarship Program, and B, Lifetime Foundation for Packaging Equipment.
I'll take that as well. So yes, of course, each year, we are so grateful to the Star Foundation for continuing to fund our scholarship program. A donation in the amount of $75,000 is awarded for the 2021 academic year. In addition to that, our Kathy Hancock, our Director of Child Nutrition Services, has applied for and has been granted a $2,000 donation from Lifetime Foundation. You may recall Lifetime Foundation also sponsored the Chef Anne Program several years back, which has greatly improved our child nutrition program.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion, please, for this item.
This is Glenn. I'll make the motion.
Thank you, and a second.
This is Scott. I'll make the second.
Thank you. Questions or comments to the board?
I just want to thank the Star Foundation and Ms. Hancock for finding us more money once again. Thank you very much.
Sonya, can I also echo that? I want to thank the Star Foundation, and Kathy Hancock amazes me as she's handing out food to families. She's also working on a grant, so big thank you to Kathy.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we go to our vote. Krista Barati, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Rutter?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes, with zero objections. Motion passes 6-0. We move on to action item number four, disposal of district property, A, transportation vehicles, and B, pianos.
Yeah, so these two vehicles that are being recommended for disposal, both of which are over 15 years old and also have significant mechanical and also structural damage to them. So they're being recommended for disposal. And in terms of the pianos, Ms. Patty Taylor, our Performing Arts Liaison is recommending the disposal of these two pianos, which they've not been using for several years now.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion, please, from the board?
I'll make the motion.
Krista, thank you, and a second.
Carrie, I'll second.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
Okay, so these two buses will be replaced by, as part of the fleet replacement plan, I would guess, and that's the plan. And do we know on the, I saw the note from Ms. Taylor, that people contact her about getting replacement pianos or new pianos as in donation. Do we know if any new pianos are coming into the district?
Well, folks are trying to donate to us, but again, there's not a need for them. In fact, we're trying to get rid of our pianos as well. That was the notation that she was making.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Krista Barati, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Rutter?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes, with no objections. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. We move on to action item number five, approval of contracts pursuant to competitive bids, A, diesel gasoline fuel, B, refuse removal.
Yeah, so these are two examples of cooperative bidding that Brewster participates in with a few other districts throughout the region. The diesel and gasoline fuel bid is one that we've been participating in for a very long time. It's always been successful, and it's being recommended that the low bidder be awarded the contract for diesel fuel and gasoline. There were four bidders, and of course, we're recommending contract be extended to the low bidder. In terms of the refuse removal contract, we bid cooperatively with Carmel and Putnam Valley to try to solicit more competition among the service providers, and we achieved that. In doing so, our contract for 2021 will actually be about $5,000 less than the current 1920 contract. So again, our efforts to bid cooperatively has certainly provided us with substantial savings in terms of these contracts.
Okay, great, thank you. I need a motion for this item, please.
Eric makes the motion.
Eric, thank you. I need a second.
This is Glenn. Our second motion.
Thank you, Glenn. Questions or comments from the board?
I have one question on the refuse contract. The one we accepted is like half price compared to the other two bids. I mean, is that a realistic? I mean, it's only 5,000. We've obviously found somebody that's similar to this, but are the other two just greatly overbid?
Well, that was, that was the challenge that we recognized, Brewster, Carmel, and Putnam Valley, as we entered this year. In years past, each of our three districts only received a single bid in the prior year, and that was the bid of the incumbent contract holder. So we wanted to increase competition, and in doing that, in order to do that, we decided to bid cooperatively so that it's a better, better contract for, you know, whoever would ultimately be awarded. Obviously, there's more, more money on the line. So that's what, that's what prompted us to bid cooperatively for this service. Again, in years past, each of the three of us had gone out alone, and this was an example where it made a lot of sense for us to bid cooperatively.
Thank you. Thank you, Victor, for setting that up. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. Krista Barati, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Rutter?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
Myself, Sonya Masika, yes, with zero objections. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Item number six, approval of tax refund.
Yes, this is a tax refund in the amount of about $3,000. It's been recalculated by our treasurer, reviewed by our attorneys, and approved for payment.
Thank you. I need a motion for this item, please.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Krista. A second?
This is Scott. I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. Questions or comments to the board? Hearing none. Krista Barati, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Rutter?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes. With zero objections. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Okay, and we move on to action item number seven, approval of policy, second read 5672, information security breach and notification.
Yes, this policy outlines key procedures and steps that need to be taken if and when a breach of student data occurs. This is specifically a change in who gets notified and how private information is defined. So our attorneys have reviewed, the policy committee has discussed, and we submit this to you for your second read approval.
Great, thank you. I need a motion, please, for this item from the board?
I'll make the motion. It's Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie, and a second?
I make the second, Eric.
Eric, thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Krista Barati, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Rutter?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes, with no objections. Motion passes 6-0. We move on to action item number eight, approval of terms and conditions of employment for provisional personnel specialist.
Yes, thank you, Sonya. So this action item reflects the terms and conditions of employment for the position of personnel specialist. Later in the meeting, Ms. Harris will be recommended for appointment to this position under the terms and conditions in the consent agenda. These terms are consistent with management confidential employees that are outside a bargaining unit and identical to the benefits noted in our most recent appointments of confidential secretaries, including Ms. Lauren Zagorski-Trolle, who was most recently appointed to replace Ms. Susan Gavin as Dr. Banlow's new secretary.
Okay, great, thank you. I need a motion for this item, please.
I'll make the motion. This is Glenn.
Thank you, Glenn, and a second?
This is Scott. I'll make the second.
Questions or comments from the board?
I just wanted to confirm, is the section on unused sick day rollover, that is what standard to basically all the people in that type of contract?
It's consistent with new hires in management confidential, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we can go to the vote. Krista Barati, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Rutter?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Masika, yes, with zero objections. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. We move on to action item number nine, approval of extension of SEIU probationary periods.
Yes, thank you. So this resolution recognizes the various SEIU titles of employees appointed within the last year who have not been able to fully engage in their job responsibilities during their probationary period, given schools' closure since March 13th. Bus drivers perhaps present is the most obvious example. As a result, this resolution ensures the ability of the district to fully evaluate these probationary employees for the one-year term of their probationary period under civil service law. This resolution has been reviewed, of course, by our district attorney, and we have confirmed with Paul Eldridge of Putnam County Civil Service that such extension is permissible. Finally, all employees have been notified individually, and the SEIU leadership has been supportive and in full agreement with this district action that is subject to your vote and approval this evening.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
Krista, thank you, and a second?
I'll second. It's Carrie.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
I just wanted to ask, I guess, with the executive order rollouts of the governor, this is all, this is why this is allowed, I guess, the setup, and is this what most other school districts seem to be doing? and is this what most other school districts seem to be doing?
So this is, so under civil service, individuals have eight to one year of a probationary period. Given that school has not been in session since March 13th, we decided it was prudent for the district to extend the probationary period for the individuals noted, given their job responsibilities are such that they haven't been able to fully perform their job functions. So this is a result really of civil service law and having an opportunity. It's an extension, but it's really just the full term of the probationary period where the individual is in their position and able to perform their job functions. Did I answer your question, Scott?
Yeah, yeah, and do we know offhand if other neighboring school districts are doing similar actions?
Some are, some are not. Some are, some are deciding, choosing not to. This was a conversation, of course, that we've had with our SEIU leadership. They've certainly have worked in concert with us and recognize that there's value and importance of ensuring that there's a full probationary period of, for individuals that have been hired within the last year who have been impacted by the school's closure.
Okay, thank you for setting this up, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Krista Bararty, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Rutzner?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia Masika, yes, with no objections, motion passes six to zero. Move on to the consent agenda. Yeah, consent agenda.
Great, thank you, Sonia. So the board will note that we are welcoming four new teachers for probationary appointments, so JFK and CB Starr on this evening's consent agenda. Ms. Gabriella Brown, Ms. Karen Merrill, Ms. Kristen, Kristen Muller, and Mr. Terrence Nolan. All of these individuals come to us with several years of teaching experience, and we certainly look forward to their many years of success in supporting the needs of students in the Brewster community. Certainly a note of thanks to Dr. Zampolin and Mr. Conroy, along with Ms. Maggie Andriello and Mr. Keith Allen for their efforts in securing such high-quality candidates. It was certainly a pleasure meeting with each of them at the end of their interviewing process. Also, this evening's consent agenda includes Ms. Janine Harris's appointment as our new personnel specialist in the Human Resource Department, filling the vacancy left by Christine Belcher's recent resignation. Ms. Harris comes to us from Mechanico Hills, where she was most recently the administrative assistant to the supervisor of pupil personnel. Prior to her work at Mechanico, Ms. Harris was an administrative assistant in the nurse's office at Pierre Van Cortland Middle School in Croton-Harmon. A graduate of Pace University, Ms. Harris has experience in the law field, having worked as a law secretary for several years before transitioning to clerical work in public school. Ms. Harris was interviewed by myself, along with Ms. Farrell and Ms. Brea, and we were impressed with her sense of ethics and genuine interest in human resource work. Ms. Harris's references lauded her strong character, incredible work ethic, and collaborative attitude. It's a pleasure to recommend her this evening, and on behalf of myself and Ms. Farrell, we certainly want to express our excitement and warm welcome in helping and having her join our fine school district. And finally, I'd just like to extend our congratulations to Ms. Patricia Oliveri and Ms. Lori Wiltsi, both of whom will be retiring after the 2020-2021 school year. We certainly look forward to celebrating their service to the community with this upcoming school year. Thank you.
Hey, Glenn, could I also, could I also just mention Matt Wentz, a business office intern? We want to welcome Matt to the business office. He'll be spending some time with us over the summer and into the fall and probably the winter as he completes the internship portion of his educational administration program. So thank you, Matt. Matt is a community member of ours, and he's also currently a teacher down at Mount Pleasant Lifesteal.
And can I also just kick in here, Sonia? I just want to congratulate and welcome all of our new staff, because we're doing this via Zoom, we can't see them, our new staff and also our intern. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I just see a motion for the consent agenda.
Eric makes the motion.
Thank you, Eric, and a second?
Glenn seconds it.
Thank you, Glenn. Questions or comments from the board?
I just, I also would like to welcome Mr. Wentz back. You know, like I said, he's a Brewster alumni, so it's nice to have one of our own back. I did have one question in regards to the special education for the extended school year. I think it's great that we're all getting them all in place. Do we have any information yet from SED on what type of program we're going to be able to offer this summer? Is it online? Is it virtual? Are we able to actually, you know, be one-on-one with the kids? I don't know if there's been any clarification yet.
Scott, all really, all great questions. So Elizabeth Kennedy, who is our Director of Special Services, will be sent out a message today that she will have further clarification from SED this week. So we're hoping by Friday to send out a communication to the board and, of course, to the community as far as what the direction we will be going. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. We'll go to the vote. Krista Bararty, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Rutzner?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia Masika, yes, with zero objections, motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Okay, we move on now to, um, hold on, hold on, hold on. So we have now public remarks that came into the board in advance of the meeting. So I'll just go over them. And Lori, if there was any, if something was already addressed this evening, you know, great. If not, you know, let me know what you guys can address. So there was an email that came in in light of, you know, the talk of defunding police departments and stuff going on in the country, and have there been any conversations about that with our SROs in particular? And actually, I, if you want to respond to that, but I also wanted to read something we got from NISBA. So while I'm pulling that up, if you wanted to just comment.
I checked with Mr. Carlson, who works closely with our SROs, and the answer is no, we have not, no.
Okay, and so we got from New York State School Boards Association, hold on, trying to enlarge it because I need glasses. So the, let me just see what this says. The State of New York Police Juvenile Officers Association, who, I guess I understand is overseas, that program, was quoted as saying, "We hold ourselves to a high standard for training we provide to our juvenile officers and to our SROs. We provide in-depth diversity, ethics de-escalation, and use-of-force education in regard to working with children and our presence in schools. We pride ourselves in the great work we do providing education on special needs and mental health to help officers deal with grave situations, to help them avoid these tragic incidents in New York State." And it goes on for a bit, but that was kind of the main point that I wanted to touch upon, that, you know, I appreciated that they themselves came out with a statement on their training and how working with students in schools is a very, you know, different scenario, you know, because they're, they're, they're kids. So I just wanted to share that, that they also came out with something, and that as of now, we're continuing with our SROs and our, in what we have in our district. So another email came in regarding next year, and just, you know, I think probably what's on everybody's mind. We don't have all the answers yet, but it was just questions about next year, distance learning and school learning, and what happens to funding in either scenario, and how that plays out with tax dollars. You know, obviously, right now, we mentioned, I think, earlier that the different committees, I think Michelle covered all the different committees and groups that will be meeting to discuss this. We also have the state's guidance coming in, so, but if there's anything else you wanted to speak to about that?
No, it's, it's an excellent email, excellent question. I think Dr. Gosh had mentioned that we are working on a reentry plan. We've got some direction from the governor, but there's also a statewide task force that will be meeting in June, and hopefully by the third week in June, we should be getting some further direction. So more information about that will be coming out, so it's an excellent question.
Okay, great, thank you. So today, you know, it's the ninth, but there were, over the past two weeks or so, ballot questions that were coming in. People still had questions just in general, but I think we've answered a lot with our Q and A and then the different notices that we sent out. But it just had to do with, you know, again, deadlines and mailing and ballots, and who's getting, who's not, and all that. So I think we've kind of addressed that in our Q and A, and that's on our website if anyone has further questions. And as I think, of course, was mentioned earlier, we, people still can, you know, we're still accepting via mail until June 16th at BiPAM with the updated executive order. So I think I kind of covered all that. Anything else?
Yeah, I think you did, and I just want to thank the community for being so, so patient and cooperative with us. As we get information, we bring it out, we roll it out, so I just want to mention that.
Okay, yeah, yeah, it's the best we can do. Thank you.
Oh, Sonia, can I add, add one thing? Also, anytime there's questions, we do add them to the frequently asked questions document. Victor's been excellent. Actually, the community's been great. Can you add this? And we do, so I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, and it's, I think it's a great resource, and I'm glad we've been kind of keeping track of it as we've been going along. And we got a question, again, with the updated governor, you know, June 26th graduation question. And there were a couple of those that came in, and just back to, actually quite a few about in-person, not, what are we continuing with? And, you know, every time the governor does something, it causes a reaction, rightfully so, and what's next? So I know we have our graduation committee in place, and, which is made up of community members and parents and staff, so if you wanted to just speak to that.
Sure, and Scott might want to add something because he was on the committee as well, but we also have some students on the committee. So we are moving forward with our drive-in graduation as planned. Kids are very excited, we're all very excited. But with that said, we did see the executive order that came out, and I did speak with the county executive, and it's 150 cumulative, meaning not just students, that means parents, anybody else who's there, administrators, teachers. So after our graduation, we will certainly bring that to the class of 2020 graduating committee to review it, and then we'll, we'll be coming out with a final decision. But we are, we are looking forward to our graduation next week. It's going to be excellent.
Okay.
Excited.
And the final email just had to do with a comment on, hold on, I'm trying to my writing here.
Sonia, while you're looking at that, can I just, I want to add just one other thing to the, to the, to the graduation piece. The other caveat that we have to be very careful in the governor's orders is that if the numbers, hopefully they won't, if the virus numbers start to tick up, that could change. So that's something that's also the committee has to consider too, so I just wanted to add that.
Yeah. And the final comment that came in had to do with a word that went out in the community, and the concern for our law enforcement and showing support for our law enforcement, which, I mean, of course, we do, we even have SROs that we have, hold in high regard. And so it was someone sharing a comment on their, their, the importance of our law enforcement as well. And that was the email that came in. So I'm looking to see if I had anything else real quick, and I do not. So the power of emails, and we can now go on to board remarks and committee updates. If anyone on the board has anything we'd like to share.
But I'm going to be, I'm going to be lengthy.
Oh, okay. No, I just wanted to say that I'm feeling positive about the fall. I just feel like things are starting to, you know, just look more positive, and I hope that, you know, other people in our community feel positive also, and hopefully, at some point in the near future, will return to normal. So I just wanted to say that. I, I feel positive, that's all.
Great, it's good to stay positive.
Hey, Sonia, just from the, from the Brewster Education Foundation, just wanted to tell everyone know that we were able to, with the help of, with, not the help of the community, through the work of the community, we were able to raise enough money to fully fund all of our scholarships and endowments for this year. It is an incredible testament to this community and how involved and how giving and generous that, that they are, especially in these incredible, incredibly difficult times. We greatly appreciate the support, we greatly appreciate the trust that you placed on us, and it was, it was a very, very exciting feeling to know that, that we were able to reach the goals that were set, and that the class of 2020 is going to be, is going to be, is going to receive what, what they worked so hard to get. So thank you so much to the community on behalf of the, of the BEF.
Thank you. Who's up next? Scott?
Buttons don't work. Just wanted to give a couple of committee updates. Yes, with the graduation committee, I've noticed they've been tweaking a number of the items about the drive-in graduations. They do take public comment into effect, and most of these items were discussed during the conference. They took into account people without cars, people with different marital situations, different ways to get transportation. They're trying and going through a lot of items, and I'll sort of partner off what Dr. Banlow said. With the 150 limit, when asked over and over again, the students wanted nothing more than to graduate together. While this isn't what we want, obviously, we'll review the rest of the information, but the kids want it to be together. Even it's as silly as being in their cars, they're all together at the school. It's not what we want for them. You know, being a senior parent as well, I understand, but they're doing what they can, and of course, they'll review all the information. But we have to try to give the kids the best graduation we can with what we have. To the communications, and I'm working with the different village of Brewster, the town of Southeast, and the town of Patterson, attending their meetings and letting them know where we stand on our status, on our votes, on our graduation process. They've been very receptive and very helpful, posting our information. Dr. Banlow has been going back and forth with them as we get updates, when they change the vote date. She lets the group know, and they get it out, because we're trying to communicate with as many people as we can, specifically those who may not have students in the district and won't receive the backpack emails and the 20 other forms of communication they seem to get from the school. But, you know, they've definitely tried to get it, and as we get more information, we do distribute it. Back to the graduation, I did ask my parish priest, Father Gill, to give a blessing for my son and all the other students as well. So at this Sunday's Corpus Christi Mass, it's going to be virtual online. We've given permission to meet, but just not on the big Sundays yet. We will be offering up a blessing for all the students that are graduating next week, and I would ask, if any other groups would like to participate, please feel free. These kids are going to need as, as much help as they can get, and we appreciate everything being done by the community. And just a side note to Dr. Gosh, when I was attending the Brewster meeting, they had mentioned Longview School. They're looking to move buildings. It looks like they're moving into a bigger location. I think the building across from Colbackers, I want to say, and they're in the process of working on that. I don't know if, that's more just a heads up. You know, I had to pretend I was paying attention during the meeting, but I did get some information, I just wanted to pass it on. And I appreciate all the work that the school and the committees have been doing on behalf of, at least my students, my kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Ooh, can you hear me? Can you still hear me, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, good. Anyone else on the board have any other comments?
I would just add that, and I got kicked off, so I don't think Scott addressed this in his comments. I had to log back in, but... in his comments. I had to log back in, but we did have a finance committee meeting, which I know Victor referenced in the beginning of the meeting, and, you know, we discussed a number of things, but one of the, the best pieces of information was the fact that for the bonds that's going out for our construction financing, the interest rates are so low because of the market right now that we're going to be saving two and a half million dollars, you know, just based on the low interest rate. So that was obviously good news. So I just wanted to share that.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Sonya, can I, can I add two last things? Dr. Gosh just wants to mention something about, we had gotten an email. I couldn't hear you at one point, regarding class rankings. Dr. Gosh, can you kick in?
Sure. I believe the email was in regards to school rankings and, you know, how we could expect an increase in the budget when the rankings aren't as high as, as many of us would like. So, you know, just doing some, some digging on that particular site that was, was sent. I mean, there are a number of websites that use a variety of criteria to rank schools. Most are multi-dimensional. However, this one site that was referenced in the email was used, solely used 2019 math and ELA test scores to develop this particular ranking. So as a point of reference, we had over twenty percent of our students at Wells not take the ELA and math assessments in 2019, and over twelve percent at CB Star and at the middle school. That doesn't even include over the one hundred middle school students who are accelerated in math, who don't take that seventh and eighth grade math assessment. So my point is that the criteria used and the way the rankings were determined was one metric, and that metric, which is test scores, isn't always highest on our list when we discuss what it is that we value. However, I think the, you know, the essence of the question, which is, you know, taxpayers want to get the most for their investment and want the best opportunities for their students, we get, we get that. We continually strive to improve, while not necessarily focusing on test prep to improve test scores, for example, but to improve experiences for students through course offerings. We strive for smaller class sizes and through extracurricular and co-curricular opportunities. We also aim to prepare students for the 21st century through digital competencies, academic, and, and, and what they call the soft skills, quote unquote, soft skills. All of those are, are difficult to quantify, but they are supported in the budget. So if there's a specific area of concern that this or any parent has, or any recommendations on how we can improve our academic program, I'm more than happy to have a conversation with anyone who's interested in doing so.
Great, thank you for addressing that email as well. Anything else that I missed in terms of that? We're good? Okay. Any other comments from the board on anything else? Nope. Okay. So upcoming meetings, our next board meeting is June twenty-third, and actually, I'll, I'll ask the question. I don't, we have the answer, but it just kind of occurs to me because we have this new deadline of the sixteenth, the sixteenth for the mail, the mail that'll come in, and then the voting and everything. We'll just post, once we know for sure, all the final numbers after the sixteenth, we'll post everything. I know it goes out to papers, but all on our website, I assume, to get the information out to the public, just because we're in different times right now. So we'll obviously get the information out as soon as we have it all available.
Yes.
Okay. And that's it. So other remarks, questions, comments, concerns, maybe emails to the board and the superintendent at boe@brewsterschools.org. And we do not have executive session following this today, so I just need a motion from the board to adjourn the board meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Scott?
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Krista. And let's see. Krista, how do you vote?
I vote.
On adjournings? One more time, sorry.
I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Rutzner?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
And myself, Sonya Maseka, yes. Motion passes six zero. We are adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.